It's on the agenda. Help me, Jesus. Okay. The next item that's on the work session agenda is the discussion for posting in the township board meeting recordings to the web. And Monica, do you want to?
Yeah, I can start our discussion. Thank you, Brenda. Over the past, might as well say, three, four months, I had looked for ways in order to try and add additional level of transparency into the township meetings. Currently, obviously, people can attend the board meetings as per the Open Meetings Act and come in and participate. But sometimes there are conflicts that exist in some of our residents' able, ability to attend the meetings, whether that's work conflicts or whatever else have you. And so they would like to be able to have some form of access into our meetings. So the two things that were looked at, one, obviously, was looking at the ability in order to try and videocast our meetings. It is a little bit expensive. You're looking at anywhere from $50,000 to $80,000. That's not including the cost concerns as it relates to staff and staff as it relates to video production and also any associated editing that has to go with that. So once you add that in staff, obviously, it gets a little expensive. The other alternative met fit is basically uploading of the meeting tapes, which is basically in the area of podcasting or pretty much audio streaming. Audio streaming is a lot cheaper. We already tape our meetings as a township. You can upload, basically, the audio from that meeting. And the cost on that is about anywhere from 52, sorry, 30 to 50 hours a month. People can listen to that at their own leisure. You can also make episodes in there. So, for instance, as we discuss certain items on the agenda, those particular items can be put inside of the audio episodes where people can listen to that particular item if they don't want to listen to the entire, you know, three or four hour meeting. I think it would be able to add additional level of transparency for people who cannot attend our meetings. If so, the public can still know what is discussed, just because, and there are minutes, and I want to make sure that that is clear, it is minutes. But minutes is a summary of the discussion that happens before the board. It is not the, you know, word by word that goes on in missed up board meetings. So I just wanted to bring any item up for discussion, you know, maybe to be looked at. And I know some work has been done by, a little work has been done by Travis as it relates to this matter. So also be able to allow him to say about the work that he has done. I also wanted to answer some questions as it relates to copyright laws. And particularly, I know it has been some concerns as it, if someone can take the audio and alter the audio, whatever way they want to do that. Actually, yeah, I want to make sure I'm making this clear. People can take and alter video as well as they can alter audio. You can take a video, you can cut out the last part, five more minutes in it of whatever else that they may want to put in it. The issue when it comes up to copyright laws has to do with the Digital Millennium Copyright Act. And what that does is basically if any, if the owner of the audio or the video is the owner, anyone that actually authors or edits that video or audio outside of the owners themselves actually are guilty of copyright infringement. Wherever that video or audio exists on the web, if it's found, it's like you can do a DCMA takedown order. In other words, that particular owner can basically go to whoever is the person or entity that's hosting that, might as well say, copyright infringed it audio or video, and basically go to that entity and say, hey, I want to do a DCMA takedown order. Because they are not the original owner of that audio or video. At that point in time, the server or whoever it is, whether it's YouTube, whether it's, you know, another entity, the entity that they're hosting it on the web, whether that's Google, whether that's Blogger, whether that's WordPress, they have to comply with the DCMA Act in order to take down that audio because they are not, because the person that edited it is not the original owner. So I wanted to make sure that that was kind of, that question was at least talked about as we begin this discussion. So I hope that, I hope that I can answer any questions that anyone has. And also we'll leave Travis to answer some more of the questions as it relates to some of the background and research.
Madam Chair. I was just curious, Monica, I know you've put a lot of work into this, and I was just wondering, I'm sure you've looked at other, like, townships and what they do. Have you seen other townships that put their tapes directly on, or do they mostly all do video?
There, now, in Nipsey City, they do actually put up the audio from the meeting. So they put up the entire audio. Now, there are other townships, in fact, oh, make sure, I think it's at least two, that put up the video from the meeting. The video is, I'll be honest, in regards to professionalism, I'm not sure how it is that they're doing it, because it could just be a camera there and it's kind of focused on the entire board. But in the same aspect, that camera is not moving, so it's not a lot of interaction, and it's farther sitting back. Now, if you look at Washtenaw County, what they do is similar to what Van Buren does, Van Buren Township. Washtenaw, Van, and I want to kind of talk a bit about Van Buren, because we did have a meeting with them. What Van Buren does is that they have audio and video equipment. They spent anywhere from 50,000 to, might as well say, $60,000 of their public funds in regards to getting this audio and video equipment. They also have a full-time audio and video staff person along with two other part-time people. They basically take that content, they edit it, and put it up on the web about 24 to 48 hours after the meeting is done. There's also the possibility, and any resident can always do this based on the Open Meetings Act, is that any resident can come in with a video recorder or a phone or whatever else have you, and they can record the meeting themselves, and they can put it up to on whatever medium that they so fit. So it does, none of this preclude, I just want to make sure it's clear, none of it precludes a resident from doing that, it's just to provide additional level of transparency. So I hope that answered your question.
Can I have a follow-up, Madam Chair? My only other question, and I don't know if you'd know this level of detail or maybe Travis would, but how many of those townships or cities that do it, or even the county, do they, are they able to see if it's effective, if people actually utilize those videos or listen to them? I mean, what kind of number of people are we talking about, especially when we talk about cost? And then I guess because you mentioned that piece as well, if we just did the audiotapes, that wouldn't have any additional cost to our township budget, or it could?
Well, yes, it would. So basically, you're looking at, in regards to finding a server, you got to find a server in order to upload the audio in order for it to sit on itself. That's anywhere from 30 to 50 hours a month, so it would be a cost. Now, in order to allow for professional video streaming, like they do in Van Buren Township and other cities and townships across the state of Michigan, you're looking at, number one, the costs associated with buying that equipment in order to not only just have the, might as well say, the cameras in enough areas that it can capture properly each member of the board, but also the audio associated with that. So as maybe you are speaking, right, the camera needs to come to you because your audio has, has been detected inside of that camera in order to focus on you. Then maybe it has to go down to the end of the board, might as well say, room itself. So that camera would have to switch around. Someone has to do that. Someone, and it usually is someone that is experienced in audio and video in order to make sure that that happens properly. So I don't know if that answered your question, but, okay.
All right. Travis, I'm not sure if you had anything to add.
Not a whole lot. I don't have, because you mentioned what, how, the effectiveness of other organizations. We don't have that information. I don't know if they would have that information as well. And when you do talk about posting the audio, there's so many different ways to accomplish it. You know, it can be anywhere 30, 50 bucks a month, or potentially less, depending on what type of features you're looking at.
Any other questions? Come in.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Travis, I had a question for you. I know that sometimes on the web, certain pictures may be, you may try to copy or take the image off of the internet, but sometimes it's secure to where you can't. And I know we have, like Monica said, a copyright infringement, we could, you know, go forth with that if necessary. However, could this audio actually be secure to where no one can actually get it off of our website to manipulate it?
So I've always put the position that DRM, or Digital Rights Management, which is what you're talking about, simply keeps the honest honest. The reality is, is once you post something to the public website, then it is accessible by anyone. If you can see it, if you can hear it, you can copy it, you can manipulate it. It all comes down to the controls that you have in place to ensure that your originals are your originals, and you can prove that they are your originals if it ever went to court.
Thanks.
Probably wasn't the answer you're looking for, but...
If I can, there is a way that you, depending on where it is that you upload the audio, that you can preclude it, well, exclude it from being downloaded, right? But here's the situation with that. You can do that, trustee, right, Jimmy? Yeah, but in the same aspect, there could be some person that goes on their computer and turns on their recorder and let it go all the way through on the audio that's playing and decide to, you know, I guess you could say, upload it or edit it. So even if you preclude or exclude a download, that doesn't necessarily mean that they will not be able to, be able to get the audio itself. The key on that is that that audio is going to sound muddled, it's going to sound like it has, it has distortion, it's not going to sound like the clean, original audio unless they know a lot about editing, and most people don't. But either way, I just wanted to make sure I clarified that your question there.
Yes.
Yeah, thanks for that. Because I did forget about, you could just easily have a audio recorder or other means to get things off the internet. However, I guess I think about, we have alarm systems in our car to stop the lazy criminals. And so I just think about, if we had some security on it, just to stop the lazy ones. And then, obviously, you're always going to have geniuses that could do more. So that was my only question really, or concern. But I think that ultimately, it's probably a good idea for our residents who can't make it out, especially maybe disabled residents who can't make it to our meetings. And it's obviously going to be cheaper than the video. So I would be in favor of proceeding with looking at costs and getting on paper and analyzing it and potentially for a vote.
Okay. Any other comments?
Your last comment. Thank you, trustee Jimmy. And I also wanted to add to some ADA concerns that I wanted to make sure that I brought up. Not everyone can, you know, have the capability in order to read literacy. But in the same aspect, they may have, they may have the capability to, hold up, listen with audio. Right now, you know, if that is a concern, they are either required to come to our meetings, right? Or pretty much, you know, have to have someone else read the minutes for them. I also want to make sure that, like, sometimes, you know, even with video, there may be a concern or disability that is related to site. Audio, basically, you know, allows for that person to still be able to listen and take a part, so, of the business of the township. So I just kind of wanted to put up a couple ADA concerns there too, as it relates to trying to opening transparency. So thank you.
And I attended the meeting with Van Buren Township and was surprised at how much it costs. But we looked at doing recording in the past, and we don't have our own public access channel like the county does, like Van Buren, Augusta has one, actually. But we don't, we don't have one with our Comcast agreement when it was approved years ago. So we, without having a place to upload it, you really couldn't do that professional costly expenditure that we looked into. And I, and then we talked about, looking at the city of Dippsalani, and we actually looked at that, and they just, you know, put the audio right by the minutes. And, I mean, I don't, I think it's a good opportunity to have it there. I don't see any negatives from it. I know in the past, people have downloaded minutes and altered them. And then tried to put them in a campaign piece, and once we showed the newspaper that, you know, this, we showed the newspaper, this is the approved minutes, that's not, you know, approved minutes that they're saying. So we were able to address it that way. So you're right, people can alter stuff, and if we can make it harder, I guess we should, but it's actually kind of smart of them, but thank God we had minutes that we approved and had kept them. So I support moving it forward, you know, with maybe, I don't know if we need a policy or what. Flora Rose is not here, so, you know, I would like her to be involved with the conversation. But I support moving it forward. I don't, I think it's a good policy.
Any other comments? No. All right, then we'll bring it back to the board and with more costs associated with it, if there's any. So at this time, we're going to review the agenda. Are there any public comments before we go into the agenda? We have the consent agenda. Attorney's report.
I'll save it for the board meeting. It'll be short.
Okay. We do have Wayne Dudley and Jeff Allen, who, by the way, this is his last meeting. Mr. Allen is retiring, moving to Arizona with his new bride, and we're going to miss him greatly. But we have an item on the agenda that was tabled regarding membership with the National Joint Powers Alliance, NJPA. And Wayne, my understanding is you have the most, a lot of knowledge on this. I don't want to say the most, but you have a lot. If there's questions.
I guess there were some concern that I heard about as far as how this would lock us into any bidding process or anything like that. So I made some phone calls to the, one of their membership agents and asked them some very specific questions. You know, what does this get us? What does it cost us? What does it, what are the benefits from it? And it's, it is basically a lot like the MyDeals. It's a lot like the NIPA that we already belong to. Travis was the one you told me about that we, NASPA. We're, we basically get either discounts, or we can tag on to other municipalities that may have been bid on the existing equipment that we're looking for. For instance, the Toro Mowers that we got. Toro was one of the vendors that has already had bid contracts through, throughout the United States that we might look at theirs. Now, are we locked into this? No. We can still do our own bidding process, we can still compare the price that's on there. The membership doesn't cost us a thing. What we get is bulk buying power, cooperative buying power, just like we do in all these other ones. And then, depending on what type of service or equipment we're looking for, it might just be a discount. For instance, one of the vendors that we're looking at for the fuel management system says, hey, 10% right off the top if you belong to NJPA. 10% right off the top. So even though we went through the bidding process, he's saying that the equipment that you're buying, here's a discount off, for it right off the bat. Now, I did a little bit of research, and there's over 1,000 municipalities and schools and entities here in state of Michigan already that belong to this, including Yucca, including Northville, city of Northville, Northville Schools, some very, I've got a list of them and if the board would like to see it, but they're, it's pretty extensive here in the state of Michigan itself.
Right. They're just, at the last, it really wasn't in the work session minutes, but there were a lot of questions asked, and that was one of them, was, did we have to use, because they offer a service of bidding?
They do. We can either do the bidding ourselves.
Which we do.
Which we do.
Okay.
And, or, we can give them the specs that we want, and they'll do the bidding for us. They'll take a bidding process. It's free, no matter which way we decide to go.
Yeah, so if we give them the specs for them to go out and get bids, can we, do we have to go with their bid? That was my question.
I didn't ask that specifically.
Okay. I'm guessing, yeah, but I couldn't find an answer to that question.
Yeah, I didn't ask that specifically. But all the other benefits are, in my mind, even if we never use their bidding process.
Right.
So, and the membership's free. One of the things that I did present to Lisa and Karen was the three different agreements. I specifically asked her, all right, here's our township, here's how it works, do we have to sign one of these agreements? They said no. Those agreements are basically for our use in-house to protect us. We sign them, we tell them what kind of purchasing policy we have, and we give it on them, give it to them for their records. We don't have to do that. All we have to do is sign up online, I think, and ask for your tax ID number and all that stuff, and we become a member. If we want more people on the account, for instance, if you want each director to be able to look and see what's available to us, we have to call them with the secondary people, if you will.
Oh, good. So you don't have to sign the contract and the agreement?
Bingo. That contract is just for our benefit.
Okay.
To tell them how we purchase. So if we only, if we had a purchasing agent that everything had to go to, you'd do this agreement. If we had a board approval that we had to go through first, you sign this agreement and give it to them, and they're looking for that before they do the bidding, before they allow us to look at the contractors and that kind of stuff. So that's for, that's for us.
Okay.
She said you don't have to do any of that.
Okay. And that question wasn't clear.
Is there a question? No? All right. Thank you, Wayne. Next item is budget amendment. I do want to go, I know that, can we jump to, Mark is here for authorization of bids for, to seek sealed bids for the construction of entry and exit security screening systems? I promised him that I would, he has another commitment, so this is just going out for bid.
Correct.
It will come back to the township board, of course.
Absolutely, yes. Yeah, we're just looking to get bids to see what pricing would be. We have Hobbs and Black's done drawing for us, they've prepared a bid packet and with the bid requirements, and we're just asking to put those out to get sealed bids on that for, and bring that back for approval after we get the pricing.
Does anyone have any questions on this, going out to bid and coming back to the township board? Or looking at it, so? This is, you might want to explain it for people who...
Sure. So one of the things, for security purposes, you need a distinctive entrance and exit so the screening can take place, and it's separating people that have already been through screening from people that need to go through screening. To achieve that, you need a separate exit for people that have been through screening so they're not mingling with the people that are coming in to go through screening. So what we'd be doing, as you can see in the drawings, is bringing people in and taking them off, as you're coming to our front doors, off to the left, going through a screening process, and then coming back around the backside of that. And then people would exit to the right of the entrance door, a little further down, and it'd be through a set of double doors effectively sealing them from coming back into the building once they've left the first door. They'd be in a vestibule area where they couldn't get back in there, and they'd have to only exit at that point. So that's the purpose of having the two separate doors and the separation of the doors, as you see in the drawings.
I didn't understand that, but did everyone else...
What can I clarify for you?
So the, the idea is just to bid out so that we can look at having a security area where people walk in, like at other courts, correct?
Right, yeah. Yeah, so you've got your screening area, and the other part, the other component of that is having a separate exit area, so that's why you see two, an entrance and exit in the drawings there, yeah.
Okay. And the other part of it is, we're not required to do this, but it was suggested that it be done by the state or administrator?
We've had a number, we've had some security audits, and, I mean, it's essentially standard practice for any courts in this day and age to have weapons screening. Yeah, there's no, there's no absolute requirement for it, but it's, it's kind of unheard of that we, and people are, most people are surprised that we don't have it when they come through our court, you know, attorneys that practice in other parts of the state and things like that. I mean, it's really, is one of the things that are lacking with regard to security in our part of the facility.
And this doesn't, it's not a complete package, because it doesn't include what it could cost if we had someone actually...
Right, we're doing this incrementally.
Personnel.
Yeah, I need to get the pricing for the build-out, and then once we get, you know, once I have that, I'll bring a, bring a whole package back with the cost of build-out. There'll be some equipment purchase necessary, and then, of course, the personnel contracting.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that'll all come back at a later date, but this is sort of incremental, getting this, this portion of it done.
Are there any questions?
Just one. Is it similar with the entry-exit process as, like, in 36th District Court? I think it's in, was it Rumless or Wayne? They come in one door and you have to come out the other, is that...
The way we're going to set it up, and you see in the drawings there, is you'll have an entry door here, and about 10, 15 feet away, there'll be an exit door. You're going to go out there, you'll be in a, in a glassed-in vestibule area that's going to have another exit door. So once the door closes behind you, you can't get back in, and then the exit door won't be common to the entrance door. So you don't have people mixing in that area that have been through security and haven't been through security.
Any other comments or questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you for consideration.
You are welcome. So since we're on authorization and bids, perhaps we can go to the rest of them, which are Jeff Allen and to seek sealed bids for the replacement of Section B and C, C2 of the Civic Center, and sealed bids for the replacement of Sections B and D of the Community Center roof, and...
Hi, Madam Chair. Tonight, I'm looking to get authorization to go out and get bids for the roof, two sections of roof here. It would be the one right over us, which is, you know, we're down in a basement, but up above, it's a square section there, and then there's a section over the cafeteria. Those would be, those would complete the Township Civic Center's most recent run of rubber roofing. Garland's working with me on the, on the bids, and they will, they will actually conduct the bidding as they've done in the other one. Same group that did the 14B Court, and they did our big section over Section A, if you will. So obviously, last year, we bid it last year, it's on our 2018 capital list items, so bringing it forward for your consideration on that. I don't know if you want me to talk about the other one as well at this point, or just leave this item?
Yeah, well, I, the company that's going to be assisting with the bids is who?
Garland.
Garland?
Yeah, G-A-R-L, just like Christmas, Garland.
Oh, okay.
Brad, you may have met him before. He's like a 6'5", 6'6" guy that has done, worked with me before on these.
Is he also going to assist at the community center?
No, he only does flat roof work. I had, if you, if you recall, a number of years ago, I did some specs on a, on a section of roof that would cover the 100 hallway over the community center. And so I took those and I changed, basically what we have again is a 300 hallway. So I, we went up and measured the square footage, the shingles, use, you know, the same type of shingles, so they'll match the other ones. So I put those specs together for that one, and we can choose to bid that out, you know. He, Brad recommended not bidding them together because people get confused as to which job they're bidding on. So we might want to just wait maybe an extra week or two and do the bidding instead of, I forgot what day I had the bids due for the flat roof, but...
You have a walkthrough on the 11th, I think.
Right. So Brad will, Brad will conduct that, and we just need to, you know, like, schedule a room for him, and if Wayne was just available, just make sure they got in the right room and everything, that's all we, what we'd probably need for that. That's all we, what we probably need for that. And the clerk's office, of course, they wouldn't be at this pre-bid walkthrough, but you know, there'd be subsequent follow...
Is that a good time to go on a roof in January?
Those guys are incredible.
Okay.
They just throw a ladder up and boom, boom, boom. But both of these sections of roof that we're talking about are accessible by hatch. So we have air handler, two air handler rooms that you just climb up inside and you throw open a hatch, like the hatch on a submarine and it just flips open and so, so you wouldn't have to ladder. And the one, the one that's above us is, is an extra high roof as well, so probably going to have a little bit of a higher cost just to be able to get the materials up there.
Normally, for this size of a project, we retain the services of an engineering firm to bid it out and...
I've not done that in the past, but yeah, we, you may want to consider that.
Well, you're not going to be here.
Right.
So I'm not going to go in a hatch and crawl up on the roof and...
Yeah, I think...
I could, I could do it.
Like I said, I don't want... I don't, I don't see any problems with, with the roof here, but perhaps at the Civic Center to oversee that one. I could, I could see, you know, you may want to do that for that one.
So this Brad person?
Yes.
Is he an engineer or does...
No, he's a roofing consultant.
Okay.
But he, he does, he's, he's the one who did our roof at the Community Center. We just did it, we bid it a year ago.
Okay.
And the flat roof there, yes. And, you know, we had a couple of things that I had to coordinate, like removing the electric off of the panel. So we, you know, I had to have Smith come in and remove that. We had to move some gas lines for the unit. So we, I don't think we'll have, I don't think we'll have any of those issues here. Those were so close to the, to the roof that they had to be lifted in order to put the, take the old rubber off and put the new rubber down. Most of what we have here, we don't run into that kind of a problem. And I'll, you know, I have my phone number so you know how to get ahold of me if you have a question about it.
I know. You're not going to do... I would probably feel more comfortable if OHM could oversee the bidding of it and maybe Brad can assist with going up the hatch or lifting them up or however they did it. But in your absence, because this is a large amount of money normally, I think it would be okay if you were here to oversee it.
Yeah. I mean, you could just, you would, you know, save money on OHM by just doing construction management at that point, just to oversee it. They wouldn't have to, there would be no engineering or anything on the building because it's already done.
Right.
So, you know, normally there's two fees that you pay them for.
The bidding process and the construction.
And we can conduct all the bidding process and then they just, we need to oversee the construction of it.
But you just said the gentleman doesn't do the Community Center...
Right. The shingle, the shingled roofing. They don't do...
So what's the cost on that one? I didn't know.
The estimate on the, on the shingle roof?
Because the total was 200 to 250.
Sorry, I thought I had it right.
It was just like together and I just couldn't...
I think the...
I only get two separate letters.
So the Community Center's 200,000?
That sounds about right. On the screen, Jeff.
Yeah, I knew it. I thought it printed this out.
Was it...
Yes.
For both of them, right?
No, that's, it's sections B and D of the Community Center roof.
Okay.
So that, that covers the 300 hallway and over the gym. So again, that's another high section of roof. And again, that, that would bring the Community Center all up to snuff too for probably the next, well, shingled roofs don't last as long, so you'd be good probably 15 years because we did the, we did over the golf course, we did over the 200 hallway, both sections, and we did the 100 hallway. And then with the 300 and the gym, that would finish up that building as well. So you'd have your two largest buildings completed really over the last five years. So you'd be...
So that's a $400,000 total project?
Yes.
For both?
Yes.
Yep.
And after the bids, you may choose to do one this year, maybe wait for next, you know, another year for the next one and rebid it back out.
So we're not going to bid these out until January of 18, correct?
The, there, no work would be done until then. We would like to advertise it, if I can still get an advertisement in, so that the people would know over the holidays that there's a pre-bid meeting, because that's a mandatory meeting that we have on January 11th, that they have to, they essentially have to pre-qualify. They have to let Brad know that they're going to come to the meeting and have credentials to be not just a fly-by-night type rofer. So we would try to advertise it here in the next week to, to get it out newspaper-wise and, and then people would know that, you know, the work would start in January. Or the bidding would start in January, the work wouldn't start until March or April.
What do you pay Brad to?
He doesn't, he doesn't get paid anything from us.
It's this kind?
Yep.
I just think when, now I see it's $400,000, I definitely would feel better to have a professional...
I wanted to bring these both for, they're both listed as 2018 projects. I'm not going to be here, so I wanted to make you aware of it.
I appreciate it, yeah.
If you, I would really, I mean, you could maybe hold off on the Community Center. I would really think that we'd want to get one done. So if we do the Civic Center roofs and then, because remember the other section, the small section we're going to do is over the stairwell right behind here where it was leaking?
Into IT, yeah.
We got the leak fixed. We fixed, you know, fixed the leak, but it needs, it may not last, you know, another year, so.
Right.
You know, I would really recommend at least go, see, you know, authorizing the bidding of the Civic Center and then maybe consider on, you know, at a future meeting, going with the Community Center.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I just want to clarify. I, you're saying that you'd rather, or you'd feel more comfortable if OHM oversaw both processes, the bidding and the construction and not just the construction piece?
Correct. Only because Mr. Allen is not going to be here and unless Wayne is very, very comfortable with doing it, we need someone to see it all the way through the project.
And the bidding would come back either way to the board, right?
Correct.
Correct.
And usually if it's over a certain dollar amount, we always have professional engineers oversee it. So that's the only... Any other questions? Mr. Winters?
Jeff, I don't know the answer to this, but with the Township, I know being closed after Friday and then, of course, with the traditional holiday break and then even coming back this year on January 3rd, and I know there's a Martin Luther King holiday there, I think January 16th. If the, if the bids, if the bids are due on January 18th with the mandatory meeting on January 11th, given the timing of this year, I'm just wondering, do you really think that's going to be the best time to, even if the board wants to go with one or two, one or, or one or both of the projects this year? It seems like it's a pretty tight timeline there for that to be met with the holidays and everything that are going on and with that January, that pre-mandatory bid. I'm just concerned that maybe some people might, or some reputable companies may or may not be as vigilant maybe as they might.
Yeah.
Because of, I mean, I know there's a lot of people that leave town this time of year and I just, the first week or so back in January, people were just getting their feet back on the ground and before you know it, it's mid-January and I was kind of wondering if the timing might be a little bit tight.
Well, we, I believe we did the exact same timing last year and we, and we, I felt like we got a pretty good price on it. And I would think that it would be a February board meeting that would, it would come back to. All those flat, especially, you know, there's a lot of people who do shingle roof and that don't even do big ones. They'll do houses and that sort of thing because that's, that's more of a, almost get into a homeowner or, you know, home, more residential area as opposed to flat roofs that are rubber. These, these guys and gals know what they're doing. They're, you know, highly professional and we don't take, we don't take them unless they've got three or four jobs that they've done over the past years where, you know, where they've shown that they've done good work. So they, they can't even bid on it actually.
Any other questions, OK? Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Then we have the, Wayne Dudley has a proposal from Corrigan Oil for a fuel management system in the amount of 30,000 and this is a budgeted item. Do you have any questions of Wayne?
Just a little history on why we're even proposing this or going this way. It was a joint project between Jeff and Travis and myself. This started with our fuel cards that our employees are using, not being able to program anymore. The card reader, the card device that makes those cards weren't available anymore. So that's got to start a looking. The machine that makes them isn't available anymore. Well, we just found out just in recent months, just before we came to the board with the request to go for proposal, that even the software isn't being supported anymore. We were informed, I think it was last year from the IT department, that the servers that this sits on isn't going to be supported anymore because they're not secure. So these series of events got us to the point where we're at right now and proposing Corrigan Fuel for the, what they call a fuel cloud system to be able to allow our employees to pump fuel into our trucks and our equipment from our tanks. Software's not, that Gasboy isn't supported anymore. We use almost 19,000 gallons a year between the three, between the two fuel stations that Township employees use. The one right now is at Ford Lake and the other one is at the Community Center. Between those three tanks, almost 19,000 gallons that we pump into our trucks and our equipment annually. As far as the RFP itself and why we chose Corrigan, we, we gave them the scope of the project, what we wanted to do, how we wanted to get it accomplished, how we wanted to record, what fuel is being dispensed. We told them to give us their best solution. We didn't know what was out there. We didn't know the type of technology and how it's advanced past what we have now. So we asked for their best solution. We had four vendors show up for the pre-bid meeting and three of them ended up, five vendors showed up for the pre-bid meeting and three of them ended up giving us quotes. So going over the scope of the project, going over best solution, the cost in the end, the three of us sat down and are recommending Corrigan Fuel for their, what they call the fuel cloud. Now, there's no, IT is kind of out of the picture now because it's out on the, out on the, what they call the cloud. So they don't have to, it's not connected to our network, so therefore our network is completely safe. The equipment that, that Corrigan is, is willing to and wanting to put in for us is replacing one of our pumps totally and completely, getting the tanks here back at the Civic Center recommissioned. They're much larger tanks. We can get a better bulk price in the long run. We're buying 6,000 of either diesel and/or gas at a time versus the 1,000 I'm, I'm going out to, to RK fuel at the time every other week to get fuel during my peak season. So therefore we get, get longer duration and we're buying a, a better price because we're buying a bulk. So there are some costs that aren't included in the RFP. One of them is the reoccurring monthly charge for the cloud station and being able to connect to their cloud. It's $17 a month per station. That's listed in the recommendation memo here that I'm, that I'm talking about. Basically, it's a tablet sitting out in a pedestal to where our guys would sit there and punch in the truck number, punch in the mileage, punch in the pump they want to use and it's automatically recorded. So that basically is using a cell service connecting to their cloud system. And we would have two of those, would be $140 a month for the two stations.
This is the lowest bidder?
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
And did you budget for the reoccurring costs, the monthly?
Not to my knowledge. It hasn't been yet.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
I just had one question because the 140 recurring thing prompted me to think about. I see in their terms of agreement or services, there's no like timeframe for that to finish. So would we be able to at any time discontinue our services with them or would there be a...
Yeah. When we talk to them, there's no contract limitation.
Okay.
So if we find a better deal or we find another product we want to do, there was no contract term that I know of.
Okay.
And Mr. Winters, have you reviewed the contract?
I did and I was trying to find, I was reading it on, on the computer and it got, the print was too small, so I'm not finding the hard copy, but I have reviewed it. So I may have a few more comments to make.
Okay.
But it's kind of a different kind of a...
Special.
Specialty. It's been, it's been very confusing to understand what's, what's actually going to be, to occur over there, so. But I have reviewed it and I just want to follow up on Christie Rose's comment about the ability to withdraw from their services. That might be something that might need to be more buttoned down so that there's clarity in regards to 30-day notice, whatever the, whatever the time period should be. And there's some other things I need to look at more carefully.
When, when I read it, it, you know, because we're paying for the purchase of it and then it has a fuel cloud service, is non-contracted and on a month-a-month basis.
Correct. Yeah, we own the equipment once it's in. The pumps that they put in, we own them.
Right.
The fuel cloud tablet and all that stuff, we own them.
Right.
We're purchasing them.
Right.
We're only paying, the reoccurring cost is just like your cell service. We're paying for the cell service.
Yep. Okay. Thank you, Wayne.
All right.
Well, we're going to have to go into the, is everyone okay to go right into the board meeting? Everyone okay? I can't start till 7:00 and it's 6:58. I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry.